Appreciate it. All right, let's go ahead and begin. Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council, the City of Marina Valley, Marina Valley Community Services District, City Successory Agency for the Community Development Agency of the City of Marina Valley, Marina Valley Housing Authority, Marina Valley Public Financing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council does receive a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this regular City Council meeting to order on April 6, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Marquez?
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera?
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baca?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Here.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Hockes Nade, City Clerk.
Steve Gudinea, interim City Attorney.
Mike Lee, City Manager.
Ryan Mohegan, Acting Assistant City Manager, CFO, City Treasurer.
Michael Wolf, Assistant City Manager, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Okay, there should be some.
Patty Salado, Parks and Community Services Director.
Manu Wantz, Community Development Director.
John Salisbury, Chief of Police.
Abdul Almit, Fire Chief.
Great. And I think that's it. Thank you, staff. Okay, so before we hear our public comments this evening, I just wanted to remind everyone that the comments are for items on the agenda and also not on the agenda. So make sure, you know, if you want to speak on any item or anything related to the council or not, this is the time to do so. We do ask that you keep your comments, you know, to be respectful towards each other and also to the people that are speaking. And how many speakers do we have tonight, Madam Clerk?
Oh, we have six listed and five in the queue.
Okay, all right. Well, since it's not too many, we'll go ahead and allow the three minutes for each. And let's go ahead and just make sure that when we call on you that you speak, I think you have to press, is it star six, seven?
Star six.
Okay, star six to speak if you're calling by the phone. And if we do call on you and then you're not there, then we move on to the next person. Okay, all right, let's go ahead and call the first three.
The first three are Anthony Tazoni, Angel Lopez, and Luis Palomares. I think Angel is the one that's here. Angel Lopez?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmembers Dave Marquez and Councilmember Ulysses Cabrera, members of the staff and also to the community of Marina Valley. My comments tonight, my public comments tonight are regarding support for the Beautify Marina Valley program. And when this program launched, I was thankful for an opportunity to sign up and adopt trails in my area here in District Two. And certainly, I commend all adoptees, members of the community, from council members to small businesses, churches. I commend all of you for stepping forward and being heroes and adopting many of these trails in our areas, which are in dire need of maintenance with trash pickup and its unfortunate situation we have in some areas. But certainly, shout out to you. And also, a special thank you to the Parks and Recreation Department, to Joy and to Myra for keeping members of the community engaged in the process and constant communication for plans going forward on when to start these cleanup days with these trails. And I'm thankful for the opportunity to have adopted three trails myself, which I look forward to kicking off April 24th here in District Two, and two of those volunteers as well, and also to enlist volunteers for future community cleanup events. So it's very easy to see a problem in Marina Valley when you see trash in common areas, public areas. But it's also harder to take action for these problems to offer solutions. So publicly, I kept myself in commenting on social media as I see very often, and I decided to adopt trails for myself and just get involved. So to all the heroes in our community, thank you. I salute you with your areas, your trails, and I look forward to getting started.
Okay, the next speaker is Luis Palomares, followed by Bob Palomares and Brendan Carr. Luis? Luis?
Hello, Luis Palomares, community activist. Wow, I just was looking at the last council meeting. A lot was said, and I'm so glad we're going forward with everything that's going on in our community. They're doing a good job, the council, everybody except for Marcus. He was doing all these commercials for Kerry Zen that wants to keep us in Egypt for another 40 years. So wow, and you know, he was doing all the bandwagon and all the people came out about Mrs. Zen, but then what? I mean, are we going to go backwards? Anyway, that's my, that's my take on that one. As far as I believe they're going to be talking about something about at the rec hall there, they're going to be doing a teen center and hopefully gonna call it Carla Thornton. And what a high honor. She's got it coming. She deserves it more than anybody. So I really thank you for that. And, you know, give due service to who served our community and did an excellent job while she was in the council, Carla Thornton, Dr. Carla Thornton. I already miss her because she was just an amazing person. So let's keep on the city going forward, and we don't want to go backwards and keep it going. And thank you for everything. And I believe the city manager said we got another recognition about beautifying our city. That's great. I see a lot of the potholes are being filled up. That's great. And we just keep on going forward as far as the center on ironwood and peacock, that's coming along really good. Once the vegetation, everything's in there, it's gonna look great, landscaping. So that's another good thing. And then everything that's just going on in our community, we're going forward, even with this COVID going on. And I know that they have the Sears Center open for the COVID shots, and that's another good thing. I mean, this mayor is doing an excellent job. Wow, I wish he could run another two years after his term, because, you know, in eight years or six years, you can't finish what you started. So I mean, it would be great if he had two more years to just finish it up. But I mean, we're going full force, and he's doing an excellent, excellent job. Thank you so much, Dr. Mayor Gutierrez, and to Victoria Baca, that's got it going forward. Also, I really give him a commend him. And I like it, I like when they put a light up that M for different things that are going on. It brings recognition to our community, and it lets us know as far as different, you know, with foster care and autism and all of those, it brings the awareness to that, that, that cause. So thank you again. And let's keep on going forward. Thank you. Bye bye.
Next speaker is Bob Palomares, followed by Brendan Carr, and the last speaker is Tom Gerald.
Hello.
Hello, Bob.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, good evening to everyone. And Mayor, I always think about you because every time I look, we're doing something good in this city, and you've led us straight down the path, you know, this city has so much to be proud of. And you're one big part of it. I mean, I'm always thinking about you. I'm praying for you, America, for doing a wonderful job. And like Luis says, I wish we could have two more years, you know, but then we want two more and two more. But I just wanted to mention that. And also, I just wanted to raise up our police department, the chief, and our fire. Chief Ahmad, you've got some tremendous crews out there. I don't think people realize how many lives are saved. I mean, you know, they're never posted or anything, but your crews do a tremendous job. I'm very proud of that, as well as our police department. You know, a lot of people don't look at it that way, but unless you're affected and you need them, then you realize how good they are. And we should all be proud. And I understand that they may be speaking about maybe some kind of youth center, possibly putting the name of Dr. Thornton. I think that's a wonderful gesture. Whoever thought of that, she was a tremendous lady. She had so much potential. And we just got to keep going, you know, but if you do that, I think we'll be proud for many years to come with her name up there, because people, kids will always be asking, who's Dr. Thornton? And I'm sure this city will be telling them who she was and what a tremendous lady, so much potential. You know, she, I spoke with her a few times, and she talked about the homeless. She had some great ideas how to deal with it, with the someone, Mr. Lopez was mentioning about cleaning up trash. She also had how we can deal with that. That was at one of her meet and greet. So I would just probably hear that. And I'm sorry, she's not here. And whoever gets on that seat, I hope they, you know, it's big shoes to fill. But think of the city and not yourself, just to be on a council. This is about the people of this city. So whoever runs, put the city first. Thank you very.
Brendan Carr, followed by Tom Gerald.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I wanted to speak tonight because I wanted to provide a public resource that has served me very, very well to the general public, and that comes from the ACLU of Utah. On their website, any member of the public can access a self-serve kit that they can use to bring up allegations against elected officials of blocking illegally on their official social media. As I have stated many times in previous council meetings, Mayor Yixting Gutierrez had me blocked on his official Facebook page for six, almost six and a half years, until last, almost last October, because of a dispute over his illegal appointment in 2014. And Councilmember Ulysses Cabrera had me block on his official Facebook page for about two and a half years. When that was going on, and I wasn't the only resident, the mayor routinely deletes comments on his official Facebook page, and we have observed that. When this continued to happen to myself and others, I reached out to multiple attorneys, and I eventually reached out to the ACLU of Southern California in Los Angeles. We documented this instance going on with myself and others. And Mayor Yixting Gutierrez was going to be named in the warning letter that was sent, but he removed, he unblocked me and Facebook after I brought this matter to the city council multiple times. And he probably spoke with the city attorney, I imagine, as they've all been briefed on this. Anyway, the ACLU of Southern California had a representative send Councilmember Cabrera an official warning letter back in February, warning him he needs to stop engaging and not only blocking myself, but any future residents going forward. And this is a documented and strongly defended matter. I don't understand how people who run for office can claim they're defending the First Amendment, or that they're being transparent when this type of behavior is going on and engaging, because I'm far from the only resident that has experienced this. Very few cities or elected officials, I have heard, purposely blocking people on their official Facebook page and Twitter, and then trying to cover it up. Councilmember Cabrera's response to the attorney's letter, claiming he wasn't aware that this was unconstitutional or a violation of law, I find that to be absolutely bogus, because they have all been briefed by the city clerk and the city attorney's office on multiple occasions, that they cannot block residents on their official social media, because it is a violation of the First Amendment. And I'm very glad that the mayor tonight did not say anything about he stands for, supports the First Amendment, because he absolutely does not. And, you know, for the last six years, he may, him and others may have thought we would not bring this matter forward to the public, especially in a legal matter. But we're, we're going to hold you accountable. You may think that you're going to get away with ignoring our rights, but you will not. And I encourage the public, who, anyone who's experienced this situation, with either city staff, the mayor, members of the city council to bring, to research the ACLU. The ACLU of Southern California has a kit.
Tom Gerald? Tom, star six to speak.
I think he had that issue before. He was trying to.
I think I'm on you.
Oh, there you are. All right.
Yeah, I had that. I don't know if it's a phone or the location, but anyhow, we got through. Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, members of staff and the public, thank you for the opportunity to address our local government here. I do appreciate it. I'm a big First Amendment proponent. And I thank those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice to give us that freedom in this country. It's a good thing. So, and I, before I get started, I'd like to, like Mr. Lopez, I'd say about the Beautify Moreno Valley program. I, and I don't say this with any bragging, but I served 10 years on the Trails Committee from, I think it was about 1990 to 2000, and did a bit of work on that. And I'm glad to see it come to, you know, here, they're still being used by the public, and it's, the young people say it's all good. So I'm thankful that people will only get out there and get dirty and do the gumshoe work it takes to keep them clean. So that's a good thing. Like, commend all of them. In the recent meetings, I've been speaking about the benefits of growth, and I was giving, I went out to see the new addition to the Skechers building there. I got to thinking, you know, that one building, which was so controversial, I was supposed to bring an end to civilization in Moreno Valley, you know, that building, because it extended the infrastructure, brought in the Aldi facility, that's the other building, just to the west of the Skechers building. And then I think it had a lot to do political influence, while the project, which is to the east of the autumn mall, between them, there's like four or five buildings, paper companies in there. And, you know, and all basically because of one building getting started, not going back, we got the extension out to the original Skechers. And, you know, I, I was trying to get a count for this meeting, I couldn't get it all together, but for how many jobs and the taxes, but I mean, there's a lot of revenue being generated. And, you know, for those who are willing to get out, going to get out, get dirty, a lot of that dirty work goes out in those undeveloped areas where people do pumping and stuff. So at least by having quality development going along the road there, I mean, along the freeway, we have the, you know, it's a self-police, if you will. So I just wanted to, you know, extol the benefits of that. And so, and originally, I'd make comments about the mayor's term, it should be four years. And I don't say that just in behalf of Mayor Gutierrez, but I think it's something we should take a look at if we restructure our program. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak and wish you all the best.
No more speakers, Mayor.
Hey, great. Thank you. Thanks, Pat. Okay, so would any council members like to make their reports at this time, their closing comments? Okay, seeing no comments there. We'll go ahead and move to our consent calendar, joint consent calendar, sections A through E. And all items listed under the consent calendar, sections A, B, C, D, and E are considered to be routine and non-controversial, and may be enacted by one motion. The motion adopted by each agency shall be recorded by the city clerk. Any items, since we already have public comments already, any items for comments?
Mayor, I would like to comment on item A7.
Sure. Okay. And I don't see, let me, I'm trying to see if I see the other folks here. Councilmember Marquez, Mayor Pro Tem Baca, did you have any other items?
I do. Mayor A, I think it's, oh, shoot, just a minute.
Okay. There, I don't know if I have any difficulty with my video, but I had a comment on A8.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I wanted to make a, just for discussion, A7, A8, and A9.
And A9, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and just start with, let's go in order. So we'll just go ahead and start with A7.
Okay.
Okay, so since Cabrera already mentioned, first, we'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A7, this item is the naming of the Marina Valley Teen Spot after Dr. Carla J. Thornton. And this thing that was brought up at, I believe it was our last council meeting or the one before that, but I just appreciate my colleagues on the council supporting this item, and also Carla's family, you know, that hopefully this, this may be something that, you know, all the students, all the youth, everybody who comes into that, the conference and rec center and walks through that teen spot, you know, they'll forever be able to remember Dr. Thornton. So, you know, just a huge thank you to my colleagues, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Marquez, and all of our city staff, and especially to Dr. Thornton's family. So just wanted to make a quick comment on that item. I appreciate, appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Cabrera. And I do know that I believe Carla's mom is listening in. At least that's what I was told. And so I'm sure she appreciates that. And, you know, we had originally mentioned, you know, different things, you know, items, but this was what really stuck out to, to the mom, especially because of her focus on education. So you're definitely right on that. Mayor Pro Tem Baca, you said you had comments on A7?
Yes, I also wanted to thank you, Mayor, for reaching out to Dr. Thornton's family and offering to recognize her service to the city in some form or fashion. And I think that this is an excellent, excellent, excellent idea, because of the youth that will come through those doors and see the name of Dr. Carla Thornton, and will hopefully look up to her and maybe be ready to get involved in the city politics and the emerging leaders council and so forth. But thank you for everything you've done to make this happen. Can I go on the next two items?
Oh, well, let's just, okay, well, you know what, we're going to go to A8 really quick.
Okay.
Okay. A8 was Councilmember Marquez?
And myself.
Oh, you too? Okay.
Yeah. I have A8, seven, eight, and nine.
Okay.
You want to do them all at once?
Okay, just go ahead and go with A8.
Okay. All right. So these two items, A8 and A9, came to the Public Safety Subcommittee, and we've been working on this diligently for a long time. In fact, Carla Thornton was involved in these two items. And finally, we've been able to bring it to the city council for approval. Now, as far as the fireworks, we're raising the fees or the fines, I should say, raising the fines to discourage people from buying, storing, selling, and using fireworks in the city of Marina Valley. Many of you know the tragedy that happened in the city of Ontario recently, where someone was stockpiling fireworks, and it just blew up and put a lot of people in the neighborhood in danger. So I'm glad that we finally got it to the city council. It was a lot of work, but it was done. So I just want to say thank you to staff, the Fire Chief Ahmad, and Police Chief Salisbury, and all the staff that were involved in the Public Safety Subcommittee in making this happen. And the same thing for the illegal dumping. I mean, you just have so many people dumping trash anywhere. So I hope that our staff is able to catch them red-handed and give them a ticket and make them pay us a steep fine. And hopefully, this will discourage any further dumping.
Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. A8, question. On these violators, when they're caught, are we going to do any type of arrests or warnings? How just going to go forward, like, they are caught? Can someone answer that?
Okay, staff?
Good evening, Councilmember Marquez. Steve Alvarado here. Yes, the ordinance will allow us to issue an administrative citation and the fees of fine amount of $1,000. Our vision is not to issue warnings at this time, but to move forward with the actual administrative citation and enforcement.
And when you say administration citations, that's not going to go on their, on their, any type of criminal records?
Yes, that is correct. It's a civil fine in the amount of $1,000. We do have the option to issue a misdemeanor citation, which would have them go show up to court, and then we would have criminal proceedings at that time.
And how would we determine that, Mr. Alvarado?
Right now, we're going to move with the $1,000 fine to deter people from doing that. We could make that, that option available at the time of the incident, depending on the severity, the amount of fireworks, and if there's been previous citations issued to this particular persons.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, no worries. Okay. And then I think, because, so Mayor Pro Tem, you mentioned already A9. Okay, I think that's all the items there. Okay, we entertain a motion?
Mayor, I would like to motion to approve the second.
Second.
Second, Mayor Pro Tem Baca. And then, City Clerk, go ahead and call for the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baca?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Yes.
Motion passes for ice. Thank you.
Okay, that leads us to, let me go here and see. We actually have one public hearing tonight, and it's the annexation F1, public hearing for the future annexation of territory to the City of Marina Valley for the Community Facilities District, and to amend and restate the rate and method of apportionment for the district. So we'll have a report from Financial Management Services, and I believe that's our Assistant City Manager, Brian Mohegan.
Hello, Mayor. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. The item before you tonight is the future annexation of territory to the city's Community Facility District 201401, and the amendment to the rate and method of apportionment. The resolution of intention for this amendment was adopted by council February 16th of this year. Tonight is the introduction of Uh, tonight is the introduction of an, uh, ordinance that will allow for the expansion of services for landscape maintenance within a traffic circle. Street lighting around the perimeter of a single-family resident housing tract and street and storm drain maintenance when new development projects are annexed into the district. The designated, uh, annexation area allows for a streamlined process for new development in the future. And this amendment does not affect the general public nor those properties currently in the district. That concludes my presentation, but I'm available for any questions you may have before opening the public hearing.
Thank you, uh, Brian. Uh, do we have any, uh, council questions? Seeing none, um, we'll go ahead and open the hearing. The hearing is now open. Any, uh, public testimony, uh, Madam Clerk on this item?
None.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the hearing deliberation, seeing there's, uh, known request for it. Entertained a motion by council to approve staff's recommendation number two.
Motion to approve.
Okay, and motioning by Mayor Pro Tem Baca and a second by Councilmember Cabrera. Madam Clerk, go ahead and, uh, please call for the vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baca?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Yes.
Motion passes for ice. Thank you.
Great. Um, we'll now move to city council reports, um, and we have, uh, three, sorry, two reports, uh, from Mayor Pro Tem Baca and two reports from Councilmember Marquez. Uh, we'll go ahead and just start with Mayor Pro Tem Baca and then.
Thank you.
Once you finish the second one, then we'll, we'll start with Councilmember Marquez.
Okay. Thank you so much, mayor. The first, um, the first report I have is from the Riverside, Western Riverside Council of Governments, also known as WRCOG. And the items covered at the WRCOG Executive Committee meeting on April fifth are, the executive committee approved a comp reimbursement agreement with the city for. The, the city of Moreno Valley for the project advancement and environmental document phase of the SR sixty and Redlands Boulevard interchange. Project in an amount not to exceed three million five hundred thousand. That concludes my report on WRCOG on JPA. We had a meeting on March twenty fourth. The commission received an overview of the joint use agreement between the Joint Powers Authority and the Air Force. We also reviewed the March inland port airport authorities' current aircraft operational status. That concludes my report on the last JPA meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marquez?
And thank you, man. First one is from, um, RCA Board of Directors meeting on April fifth. Moreno Valley's, um, MS HCP feed, uh, collection total one hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. This include forty-four residential permits and eight point six acres of commercial industrial for the month of February. That concludes my report on RCA. On the RTA. Riverside last, um, raised in their, in their, um. Increases for bus fares was back in July twenty nineteen, and they had planned another one for this July. From the impact of the, of the pandemic, bus ridership has dropped quite a bit. In consideration of these difficult times, RTA has decided to delay the second increase and focus on rebuilding our ridership again. As people get out more and more often, we're, we're hoping that they start using public transportation. If you have any. Or need information, you can contact the Riverside County Transit dot com website for, uh, further, uh, um, details that concludes my report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, uh, Councilmember Marquez. Um. Okay, there we go. Uh, city managers' report.
Uh, thank you, mayor, members of the city's, uh, council. I just have two items tonight. Uh, first, there was a speaker that spoke about awards and yes, we did win another award. Uh, actually it was two. This is actually for Ben Valley Utilities. Uh, this is awarded from the American Public Powers Association. Uh, the first award for, was for the exceptional reliability for being the top twenty-five of all utilities, uh, for our reliability rate. And the second award is actually a first place honor, uh, national recognition for twenty twenty electric utility safety award of excellence. And this is in recognition of our MU utility with the lowest CT incident rate, uh, within the, our group. So a fantastic award for our, our, our city and once again, thank you for leadership, uh, on, on that one. The second item is that, uh, there was another speaker that spoke about the beautify mobile and, uh, in less than three months, we have, uh, over sixty percent adoption rate. And that includes over a hundred, uh, trails, parks and roads that have been adopted already. And, uh, it's been a fantastic program and I see a lot of the community members are now, uh, very active and going out and, and, uh, and clean up the. The roads or the parks or the, uh, segments that they have adopted. And also, I just wanted to also focus on our community of service that's coming up. It's Saturday, uh, Saturday, May eighth, from eight to twelve P M, P M. You could go to our website to, uh, to sign up for the event. You don't have to adopt a park or anything, just sign up. You can come by yourself, come with your family, come with a group of friends, and, uh, we're gonna have some refresh, refreshments, uh, offered in the morning. And we'll send you on your way to, uh, help beautify mobile. So that concludes the city manager's presentation tonight. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you so much. Uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, go to, uh, our closing reports. We'll start with Councilmember Marquez.
Nothing tonight, mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you, mayor. And s- today, I just want to talk about a couple of things. I won't take up the entire five minutes, but. Um, as Mike Lee mentioned, we, uh, you know, have been hosting multiple. Community cleanup events, uh, throughout the, the city, you know, various community leaders coming together and gathering their team of volunteers. And this past weekend, uh, I was fortunate enough to be joined by, uh, several people, uh, to clean up parts of Iris. Uh, over next to Pedro Arena Park. And, uh, you know, it was a real nice event. The weather cooperated. It was, it was not too hot, not too cold. And, uh, funny story, actually, the, the manager who's gonna be overseeing Rays in Canes, uh, the opening in Moreno Valley, he came out with his two sons. And, uh, so that was real nice, you know, they're hard workers. You can tell that he's a good father, cuz those kids were outworking all of us, I'm telling you. I mean, it was, it was just beautiful. So I appreciate all the volunteers who came out and everybody else who has adopted a road or a park or a trail and is out there. Hitting the ground, you know, with the trash grabbers and the gloves and the trash bags and helping to beautify our city. So, you know, it's, it's, uh, really appreciated and we just, you know, continue to collaborate, each one of us doing our part and, you know, it adds up. And, uh, you know, it's a, it's a nicer painting. It's a nicer picture and, uh, it's a better presentation for everybody coming to our city. So, uh, just a, a quick note on that. Also, last week, uh, I don't want to steal the mayor's thunder. I'm sure you're gonna talk about this as well, but we did have that event over at the rec center. Uh, Kawaii's kicks, a hundred and twenty, uh, you know, happy, happy families, happy kids. Uh, so it was a real nice event, but I'll let the mayor talk more about that. Um, as you seen today, it was announced that tomorrow, uh, Wednesday, April seventh, Riverside County is moving into the orange tier. So basically, um, Riverside County businesses and, you know, restaurants, theaters, et cetera, et cetera, are going to open. Uh, going to be allowed to open at increased indoor capacities and, uh, several other things that are changing. So, you know, as long as we stay in this, uh, you know, the numbers stay on the same trajectory as they have been for the past three weeks. Um, you know, if we keep up the same trajectory for the next three weeks, then it looks like we're gonna move into the next tier. And also just today, Governor Newsom announced that, I believe it's June fifteenth, the state is, is looking at a full reopening. Uh, for, for businesses and residents. So, um, you know, that's a, that's a big announcement. It's very exciting. And, uh, it's just a testament, you know, to all of the work that everybody has put into, you know, wearing our masks and washing our hands and staying indoors for. Uh, more than a year now and, and doing our best, you know, to, again, work as a community, collaborate, help each other for the common good. Which is, you know, keeping everybody healthy and saving as many lives as possible. So, you know, just want to, again, give a huge thank you to, to my colleagues on, on the council, uh, to everybody at City Hall, all of our, uh, city staff. For helping to, you know, bring the testing facilities, to bring the vaccination sites, to put all of this together, because it's all added up. And culminated to where we are today, which is more reopening and a brighter future. So, um, I think the last thing I want to mention is just the, um, things that are kinda happening in DC. It's a lot of different things, but one of the positive things is, uh, talk of an infrastructure package. So I believe it's about two different parts, right, the first and second part. And the first part, uh, President Biden announced last week in a press conference as well. Uh, we're looking at about, uh, two trillion dollars or so. The final numbers will come once, you know, he hammers out all the details with Congress. But that is something that we're definitely, you know, looking forward to, because, you know, we can use that funding for infrastructure, whether that's. Widening the broadband system for internet for our kids or, you know, fixing our roads that we desperately need. So, you know, definitely keeping a close eye on that and as more details come out, we'll, we'll make sure to keep the community posted. So I'll leave it at that. Just, you know, please stay safe, everybody. We're almost at the end of this thing and, uh, we'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cabrera. Uh, we have, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Baca.
I hope everyone had a happy Easter and celebrated with their family. I know that it's very difficult right now with the pandemic going on, but we're gonna do the best we can under the circumstances. And, um, I know that we're gonna be, uh, a little more liberal with, uh, the, the restrictions. I just ask everyone to continue to keep your distance, wear your mask and wash your hands, um, over and over again, so that we can stay safe. And that, yes, we get to normal once again and hopefully very soon. So thank you so much to all the staff for all the work you do. Uh, thank you to the, um, subcommittees, um, the, uh, parks and community services. Public safety for all the work that, um, staff does to bring these items to the city council. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem. I'm gonna keep my comments short as well. I just want to thank, uh, everyone, the staff, uh, everyone that's listening in as well. Um, thank you, you know, for your commitment to supporting our community. Um, as far as, you know, our staff, you guys just continue to do an amazing, amazing job. You know, one example, uh, like Councilmember Cabrera mentioned, and he was there, uh, last Friday, was the Kawaii's kicks event. Uh, that was a really great event where, uh, Kawai Leonard donated over a hundred and twenty, uh, shoes kicks, uh, to kids, uh, in need in the community. Uh, we had several kids, uh, show up, uh, that, uh, from different schools. I believe that was Armada Elementary. I forgot what the other three schools were. But they were there. Sutemi Elementary, I think, was one. And, uh, they were just really, really happy with their parents and everything. So, um, Kawai, I know, wants to continue to do more partnerships and we're gonna continue to work with him and his foundation. And hopefully we can, uh, do a lot of great things in, in the community. And that's someone that we're really proud of, by the way, cuz he grew up in the city. Uh, so, um, we're really happy about him. Do want to wish everyone a happy Easter. Hope, I hope that you all, uh, enjoyed it with family. Uh, and I know many, uh, of you are now getting vaccinated, which is a good thing, and then you're probably able to celebrate with your families. I do want to, uh, remind folks though that we do have a CRC Center, um, available Saturdays and Sundays, uh, for vaccinations. And it's in partnership with Apple Urgent Care. Um, you can go to, um, appleurgentcare.com to sign up. Or you can go to mobile.org slash forward slash vaccine. Mobile dot org forward slash vaccine, and you can look at the various, uh, community providers that we have there and you can make an appointment. Uh, especially for the CRC. It's very, very important that we get more folks, uh, vaccinated. And, um, again, I just want to wish everyone, um, a happy, uh, week and looking forward, uh, to our next council meeting. I want to, uh, thank, uh, my colleagues as well for all of your hard work and, um, in continuing to move the city forward. Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.